Good evening and welcome to this public hearing of the Board of Education. Tonight, we will hear from the public on the Board of Recommendation Three of the Phase Two Redistricting Plan. As described during the public briefing on November the 12th, the plan's center on altering boundaries for schools in the Annapolis, Ronald, Broadneck, Crofton, Savannah Park, South River, and Southern Clusters. As it did in Phase One of the redistricting process, AACPS worked with WXY to examine enrollment patterns across the schools in the clusters. The Board is scheduled to vote on adoption of a redistricting plan on November the 19th. The adopted plan would go into effect in the 2026-27 school year. The link to sign up for public comment for tonight opened at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, November 12, 2025. It closed on Saturday, November 15, at 12:00 PM. We will begin with virtual speakers this evening and then move on to in-person speakers. Speakers will be allotted two minutes each. We ask that you be respectful of the time limitations so that we do not have to mute people or turn off the microphone in mid-sentence. You may not allocate any portion of your time to others. I would like to remind everyone that it is inappropriate to discuss or reference specific personnel with recommendations concerning their status with our school system. We have been very proud of our speakers thus far for maintaining civility and respect for everyone we are here this evening, to continue to listen to anyone who wants to advocate for their beliefs and to provide recommendations, of course, in an appropriate civil tone and manner. We ask everyone to please focus on the proposal which was moved forward for consideration by this Board of Education. If you are not present or do not speak up when it is your turn in the order, we will move you to the end of the list of speakers. We will provide one additional chance for you to speak after we get through all of the remaining speakers. If you are not present at that time, you will not have an opportunity to speak. For the record, please state your name before speaking. Handouts may be given to the Board's Executive Assistant. Those who have missed their opportunity to speak may email their comments to the Board Office at boardoffice@acps.org. The light in front of me on the dais will flash yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. Then a red light will appear, and a tone will sound when your time has expired. I will begin by calling the first five speakers. Please come forward. You may choose to speak from the podium or from the witness tables, whichever you prefer. And once again, we'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening. Just a comment or two. Ms. McFarland, Erica McFarland, is not able to be with us here this evening. She asked me to share that with everyone. She made it very clear that she would be listening to all of the testimony that is provided this evening. And then finally, Dr. Burdell has asked to speak, and I'm going to allow him to do that at this time. Dr. Burdell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all who are here in attendance and those who are on virtually. Just a couple of comments that I want to make. This has been, this has been difficult. And I think I said that at the onset of this, that redistricting wasn't going to be easy. We knew Phase Two would be much more difficult than Phase One just because of Phase One resulting in us opening a school that resulted in us having to conduct redistricting by policy. But also, when I started this job in 2022, I was told that whole district redistricting needed to happen in order to ensure that our schools are balanced. And we did that. And we knew that by doing it, that it was not going to be easy. But we talk a lot about tone. I talked about tone in my very first board meeting when I started here. And honestly, some of the comments, the way that they were directed last week, whether it's to staff, a board member, or even myself, I thought was inappropriate. And normally, when I do this, I like to speak straight from my heart. But I decided to write this so that I don't miss anything that I need to say and that I also make sure that we get this on the record. So let's start. For anyone, and I mean anyone, to insinuate that my absence from last week's hearing is an indication that I do not take this process or my responsibilities as superintendent of this school district seriously is absolutely unacceptable. We've had a phenomenal run over these first three years, working with this board, this current staff, fixing the vast majority of transportation, innovating, bringing SAT scores up, MCAP scores up, eliminating two-rated schools down to just four, 95% of our schools are three-star rating or better, nearly fully staffed. We've done a great job. And I think it's unacceptable to get the kind of emails that I got on Friday because I wasn't here. Stuff that I think that if some of you read the tone of some of those emails, I think you too would be disgusted that somebody would send the kind of emails that they sent to me. Further, to address me or anyone on our team as if we are peons, that was my word back in 2022, or that we're nobody or we're inferior, is unacceptable. It's intolerable. It's not something that I'm going to stand here and just silently let it happen because I have staff looking at me. Our children are watching everything that we do and say on both sides of the dais. So we need to think about that as we think about how we communicate with each other. Now, I don't feel for one second that I have to justify why I wasn't here last Thursday. But I've been transparent from day one, so I will tell you why I wasn't here. I had a longstanding family commitment that did not conflict with any AACPS obligations until we had to set the hearing up a little more than a week ago. In fact, the hearing was supposed to be a week ago tonight on Monday, not last Thursday. But we had to move it so we could complete the materials based on our Board's actions to present to the public at the briefing last Wednesday. So when amendments happen, we then have to make adjustments, and we need to make sure that we have time to do that. So please hear me on this. We moved this so that we could provide you and this board with more information. Rest assured, rest assured that I have watched the video of the hearing. Again, being accused that I did not attend and being sent links, basically, we're directing you, we expect you, that type of tone, as if I'm not going to listen to what you all have to say. At the onset of this, you talked about conference rooms not being used appropriately. We went over there. We looked at it. The second I went in that building and we realized that there was some potential omissions on capacity, I immediately talked to our team. Let's go to the IAC and see if we can adjust the capacity. I've listened to students. I've listened to adults. So to sit here and insinuate that I don't care about what the community has to say, I think that's inappropriate. Now, as to our team, I get that this is an emotional process for everyone. I have said that many times, and people who are impacted have every right to disagree with facts. What I won't allow to happen, without calling it out, is to question the integrity, the credentials, or the work ethic of people who have spent years in their fields and spent hundreds, if not thousands of hours over more than two years on this redistricting process alone. In case you missed Bridgette Byron's Capital Gazette story on last week's hearing, let me share this quote from the executive director of the IAC with you all. "The IAC and Antirondo County Public Schools are working effectively together to grapple with the many complex issues having to do with enrollment and facility capacities issues." That doesn't mean that there can't be disagreement. We never said we can't disagree. And we knew, it don't matter what community we end up having to redistrict, we know we're not going to have happy people. I said that from the beginning. But it also lets you all know again that I think we've been honest. We have not sat here and said, oh, we're perfect. Everything that you guys are saying to us is wrong, and we're right. We wouldn't have made those adjustments if we were operating in that manner. But please know, there's no conspiracy. Our team is not incompetent. Again, I totally understand the emotion, but let's move forward and let's do it respectfully. That's all I'm asking. Mr. President, thank you for this time.
Okay. So we're going to begin this evening with our virtual testimony. Our first speaker is Sarah Zach.
Good evening. Thank you, and thank you for making even more time for everyone to say what they need to say. I'm Sarah Zach from Davidsonville. I think we can agree this has been a long road, hard on everyone. I'm sure we've all had sleepless nights. You all as board members have likely been getting an earful for months on end. And this is especially nerve-wracking for folks in crises, in our case, a breast cancer crisis, which meant we have relied on our supportive community to get our four children in AACPS to and from activities, meals, and so forth. My husband and I flinch a bit when phrases like surgical removal are hurled around without real understanding of what that actually means to people like our family. The day this phase kicked off way back in January, I was up at Hopkins on a five-day stay for yet another procedure. We found out the day after I was discharged about the scenarios which would shatter our needed community and uproot our little ones from Davidsonville Elementary. It would pull our kindergartner from aftercare he's known since age two with incredible folks who nurture him when I can't. We are weary and fatigued from many things, including this lengthy redistricting maze. But we are grateful for the thoughtful, data-driven approach taken by the board. You all have shown commitment to looking objectively at the numbers and systematically collecting feedback, which we worked hard despite all odds to provide. You created a collaborative process open to all from the beginning with a high level of community engagement and transparency. From the town halls to the surveys and conversations, it's been clear that the board has taken the time to listen to all voices and to understand different perspectives and to use that feedback in shaping Revised Board Recommendation Three. This collaboration and careful consideration led to fiscal responsibility in not recommending taxpayers pay more to double buses on dangerous roads, including Birdsville Road, which my own daughter was on last year when a car flipped to avoid hitting her and others on her bus. We are filled with gratitude for the Board's acknowledgement through Revised BR Three that Davidsonville is one community that should stick together, especially through crises.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Our next speaker is Shauna Baranaskas.
Hello. I'm here tonight to respectfully voice my strong opposition to the proposal to move students from Belvedere Elementary to Arnold Elementary. Like many families, we chose our house based on schools it's zoned for. With three young kids, access to a strong and stable environment is extremely important to us. Belvedere has been that for us, with our children thriving under the leadership of an excellent principal, dedicated staff, and an engaged PTA. These non-quantitative factors are invaluable and simply cannot be replicated. The proposal under review is flawed for several reasons. First, the enrollment projections driving this recommendation are not stable. The entire county is experiencing shifts tied to federal workforce initiatives to shrink and/or reassign the federal workforce outside the DMV area, as well as evolving return-to-work policies in both the federal and private sector. These shifts are ongoing and not yet reflected in the data driving this proposal. Second, we cannot ignore the emotional and academic costs. Uprooting these students who have been significantly impacted their entire lives by the social disruptions of COVID risks harming their learning and overall well-being further. Third, the school board has completely ignored the impact of logistical burdens to many families. Most of us already have aftercare school arrangements in place. When redistricting proposals were first published, we immediately requested to go on the aftercare waitlist at Arnold Elementary, and we're told that we could join the waitlist along with dozens of other families. These shifts are not minor inconveniences, they're real hardships. Finally, there's a lack of a clear academic benefit. From whatever review to the Board's materials, the rationale appears driven by balancing numbers that keep changing rather than enhancing educational outcomes for the students involved. Our focus needs to be on what's best for the children's learning and well-being, not simply logistics. I ask you today, please not to move forward to the redistricting. Belvedere families feel they weren't given any say in this, given that every single recommendation pushed forward had the same outcome for our children. As someone said the other night, this is geographically unnatural and makes no sense. As someone said the other night, this is geographically unnatural and makes no sense. We live closer to at least three elementary schools closer than Arnold. If redistricting is necessary, please slow down and consider the broader external factors affecting enrollment and explore alternatives that don't, won't require redistricting.
Your time has expired. Our next speaker is Abraham Sadat.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal Numbers of the Board for this opportunity to speak tonight. And truly thank you for the enormous amount of work, time, and emotional energy each of you has put into this process. My name is Abraham Sadat, and I'd like to share my thoughts respectfully and clearly. I do not support split articulating Nantucket. I'm concerned about the inconsistencies families have observed throughout this process. And I hope we can refocus on what the IAC and your own data identify as a real issue under utilization. BR3 affects less than 1% of students, yet it protects schools with hundreds of open seats while placing the impact on communities that are already full. Families are trying to understand why the plan now targets such a small group while leaving major imbalances in place. This will bring everyone back to the redistricting table in two years from now. Well, except for Mr. Morgan, who will be in college. On Nantucket, I'll keep it brief. The community's analysis shows that splitting Nantucket would generate about 1.5 million, less than 1% of the capital budget, while pushing our Rundle middle to 111% capacity for years. The IAC has been clear that overcrowding does not reduce funding, only empty seats do. And none of the major projects actually require the split. At the same time, we're looking at, we're overlooking one of the county's biggest challenges. Annapolis High, a high poverty school that has used eight portables for over a decade and relies on floating teachers, is severely overcrowded while South River High has hundreds of empty seats. I actually asked the IAC directly about this imbalance. Their response was simple. Overcrowded schools hurt learning, underutilized schools waste public money, LEAs must balance supply and demand. And the concerning thing about this is that this does, this impacts all adjacent schools. Crofton, Southern, Severn Run, Annapolis, South River touches so many schools. Please do not waste those empty seats. I also want to gently acknowledge the inconsistencies families have noticed. Earlier proposals were removed due to concerns about split articulation for dangerous roads, even though many of those students already use those exact roads to access the schools they attend today. And the only difference would have been making a left or right on that dangerous road. Now, Nantucket students are being asked to travel a high-speed state highway with multiple fatal crashes and M. identified safety concerns. And to
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Alshire.
Hello?
Yes, Carrie.
Am I there?
Yes, we're ready.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Carrie Alshire. I'm a resident of the Crofton community and here to ask all to vote no on Board Recommendation III unless the split articulation of Nantucket is removed. Since the dangers of Route 3 were belittled by at least two board members at the November 5th board meeting, I do not plan on re-raising it, only to ask that all re-watch the November 5th meeting and apologize to this community for the dismissive remarks. Route 3 is a huge safety concern and calling it anything other than that is inappropriate. The focus of my remarks will be on belonging. According to Parenting Today's Teens, one of the most powerful influences on young people today is their need to belong, to fit in and be accepted. According to Mental Health America, it's human nature to want to fit in and be accepted by our peers. According to Science Direct, evidence suggests that social belonging is especially important during adolescence and social exclusion and loneliness have negative effects on immediate and long-term well-being. According to Responsive Classroom, the feeling of belonging gives adolescents the security to express opinions, take academic risks, and try new roles. According to Mind 24/7, the feeling of belonging shapes the child's sense of self-worth and happiness. According to Kids Mental Health Foundation, kids who belong do better academically, are less focused on being bullied, build friendships easier, and learn new skills. I could go on and on. Please keep Nantucket kids where they belong in Crofton. You are gambling with their academic success, mental health, and futures. Do the right thing by these kids and vote no to split articulating Nantucket. Find alternatives. Vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker is April Sweet.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me time to speak this evening. My name is April Sweet, and I am speaking tonight about the split articulation for Nantucket Elementary School. I am in the affected area that is part of the nomination to be removed from Crofton School and Middle School to a Rundle High School. I'm a parent of two that would, that this change would affect. One is a current ninth grader at Crofton and one is a current eighth grader who will hopefully attend Crofton next year. We moved into the Crofton community area two years ago after doing research on the schools in the area, as all parents do before deciding the best place to move their family. Our current eighth grader knows what he wants to do once he attends high school next year. He wants to be a part of the signature program at Crofton High School, which is the safety and security and the digital aid. This program will be his career completer program that is one of the choices for graduation requirements with the Anarundel County Public Schools. Part of the signature program his junior year, he'll be able to apply for the high school work-study program with NSA. This is the only high school in the county with this program. With the signature program, students can only participate in the one at their assigned school. How do I tell my child, among other parents telling their children that the adult said that they have to start their career readiness over because the adult decisions that don't benefit the kid's goals? I'm not going to touch on to the route free because I think a lot of people have already touched base on that. You have heard from students, parents, extended family, members, community members who are safe, who all say I want the same thing to keep Crofton and Crofton. Crofton wanted waited years to get a high school. And now five years into having one, we're being told that we can't be a part of it. We have to go back to what it was. Our kids in the community is Crofton. Our kids rec sports is Crofton. Their library is Crofton. Their school should stay Crofton. Our kids have a community they feel is safe. They have established stability and structure. A post made by AACPS Facebook, who we stated, the board will hold two more hearings and put amendment in the plan. I ask you to change the click to what in that statement. Thank you.
So that does conclude our virtual testimony this evening. We're going to be moving on to our in-person testimony. I'll be calling up five speakers at a time. Our first five speakers are Laura Glisten, Michelle Reed, Mindy McConville, Lane Neidig, and Pravina Ragavan. Once again, you may decide to speak from the podium or seated. If you decide to speak, seat it. Please pull the mic closer to you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Glisten, representing the Glen Isle-Hamilton communities. Our Nantucket neighbors made it clear that they are being uprooted based on a rationale that has been proven false. Glen Isle and Hamilton are in the exact same position, but with even a smaller group of students, making the impact more disruptive and the reasoning impossible to justify. If keeping these 27 students at DES has no negative impact on instruction, operations, capacity planning, or funding, then what problem is solved by separating them from their school community? If getting all schools under 100% is not a countywide goal, why are you allowing it as a justification to surgically remove our 27 students by allowing other schools to remain over the 100%? If the board is not fully confident in the funding formula, then the only responsible vote on BR3 is no. Each of you is responsible for the well-being of all of Anarundel County. This includes refusing to let predetermined outcomes from your peers stand when logic, data, and fairness say otherwise. I know it's not easy, but it's right. Ms. McDermott and Ms. Schellheim, you have consistently pushed for equitable treatment.
Please refrain from mentioning staff. Please refrain. You can, you can say staff.
Okay, I apologize.
Thank you.
I ask that you all continue to push for equitable treatment across communities. On Wednesday, please ask yourselves, if the decision costs nothing, breaks nothing in your model, and prevents unnecessary harm, am I really willing to uproot children for the sake of an arbitrary timeline? The actions you take this week won't appear in any history books, but they will shape the personal histories of 27 children whose lives will change because of your vote. Please be on the right side of that. Don't choose the easy end to this process. Choose the right one. Vote no on BR3. Thank you.
Michelle Reed.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Reed, and I'm the mom of a fourth grader from Reva who currently attends Davidsonville Elementary. My request tonight is simple and reasonable. Please vote no or delay the vote on BR3, not to stop redistricting, but to allow the necessary time to validate the IAC criteria and ensure decisions are based on accurate guidance, not assumptions. We've learned that a key funding rationale used throughout this process is not accurate. Families were told that every school must be below 100% utilization to qualify for state funding. As parents in the Nantucket community confirmed last week, the IAC stated that a school can exceed 100% and remain eligible, and that concerns arise only when adjacent schools fall below 85%. If a major premise of this plan is not aligned with state criteria, then taking more time is not just practical, it's responsible. In our little pocket of Reva, this plan affects just 27 students, including fewer than five rising fifth graders who would leave DES for their final year. What seems small in data terms is significant in real life for the kids whose community is being reshaped. The recent Capital Gazette column asked the same question Nantucket families raised. If the number is so small, why do it at all? And in our case, removing our 27 students brings DES below 100% by only a handful of seats. That does not improve operations, instruction, or funding outcomes. It simply moves children to make numbers look cleaner. This is not student-centered policy. Our small community has shown up, submitted research, and remained engaged, not to resist change, but to help ensure the change is accurate and developmentally appropriate. With that in mind, I respectfully ask the board to either vote no or delay voting on the revised BR3 to allow time to verify how the IAC formula is actually applied. If we have not confirmed the IAC guidelines, then we are not ready to finalize this plan. When the rules are still unclear, the right vote is no. Thank you.
Mindy McConville.
Good evening. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of 27 children in Reva, and you have our handouts at your desk. Tonight, I ask you to picture the 840,000 students you represent. All of them have one thing in common: community. They live among and with the kids they go to school with. But now our 27, the tiny group of children in Reva who've been surgically carved out of their school community and reassigned to a place they don't live in and don't connect to. In Phase 1, Dr. Heiser committed to eliminating attendance islands. Why is that no longer?
Once again, please refrain from mentioning, that's okay. Please refrain from, just staff is fine.
Yep, sorry. Staff committed to limiting attendance islands. Why is that no longer a goal? Why are 840,000 students given access to live in and among their school communities except for these 27? The new reality is that utilization over 100% exists in nearly every Maryland county, and you have that map at your desks. Like Nantucket, our tiny sliver, these 27 kids will not impact school funding. I've gotten to know you over these past few months. I've met you in person. I've listened to what you've said at your meetings. I've been to your webpages and I've read your bios. You coach basketball. You are scout leaders. You are community leaders. And many of you quote that you ran for this position for the kids. You know what it's like to build a team, to foster trust, and to help young people thrive in a community that believes in them. Please treat these children as teammates, whose emotional and academic well-being depends on the continuity of the relationships that they've built, the very foundation that you believe in. Dear board members, please don't let surgical efficiency override human connection. These 27 students deserve the same foundation of belonging that you've offered the other 840,000. Vote no for BR3 and implement a plan that offers community for all, not just for some. And thank you so very much.
All right, good evening, Board of Education. My name is Lane Neidig. I am from Glen Isle. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm a father of four kids. So it seems that our community in Glen Isle has been kind of predetermined that we would be chosen into this setting. So, you know, we've kind of been engaged throughout the process and, you know, wondering why we've been chosen. And we've asked a lot of questions as to why or how it was arrived behind. And then what savings or benefits would that provide to our community? And we haven't really gotten an answer to why we were selected, even though we are not close to Central Elementary. We're not connected in any way. So we haven't had our questions answered. I think we've come to a lot of these meetings. And so we're waiting to have our concerns addressed, hopefully at the next board meeting. So as you've heard in the data, you know, you know, we have 27 kids. We think the number may actually be a lot less than 27. So if we have the actual enrollment data, we might be, you know, significantly less than what you think. I know we had all seen that the, everyone's talking about IAC funding that we, that it seems to not be a given, that it's not assured. And if we don't know, I recommend voting no until we do know. In our research, you know, we've come across an extra classroom. This was after that, and we had 27 kids that, that were supposed to there. And I think we have enough kids to fit in that classroom. So we should fit. And so, you know, I think everybody wants this process to be over with. And I know that's something we all feel strongly about, but I think if we just tinker it a little bit more, we can get it correct and get it right. These kids don't have to move. There is room for them. And I think it's the right thing to take the extra time that it takes to get it right. And if we can get those figures, get the answer, I think we'll, we'll find that we are under, we are under and we're going to make it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pravina, and I'm a mother of a third grader, student at Davidsonville Elementary School. She's right behind me. During the last hearing you've heard and Dr., sorry, and the staff has brought up that the IAC formula may be misinterpreted. So I'm asking you to really look at that. I have a whole speech that I was going to prepare, but I'm going to talk from the heart and say, look, BR3 proposal doesn't fit the AACPS redistricting criteria that you've mentioned before and for. You've heard from my colleagues talking about, hey, the IAC doesn't work. It's 27 students. And let me tell you what that is. It's my four kids, four kids and my daughter's grade are being asked, you get to move. And she was told by her classmates, you're from Reva, you don't belong. So I ask you, do you really feel that it's necessary without knowing all the formulas? So I ask, take the time. You don't have to get this done by Wednesday. You have time. I would ask that you have public hearings where the AACC can talk to all of us, where we can see the new updated facilities plan, where we can actually make a discussion with you. And I'm willing to donate my time, my money, my resources, and my entire data team. I run a bank to come and sit here and help you. I know resources are scared, and I'm sure a lot of other parents would want to do that to make sure the entire community is involved. I want to appreciate that all the Davidsonville parents have come out. All of their concerns are exactly our concerns, the same things. We have kids in special ed. We have kids who are now going to be 20 minutes and have problems on the bus because they can't adhere to that. And all I'm asking you guys is to take the time to work with us to really ensure that both the Nantucket and the 27 kids at Reva, who are Davidsonville, who are go to Davidsonville since 1961, continue to have that opportunity. And I'm willing to give you my time and my money to help you come to make a better conclusion for all in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Jessica Wisner, Miriam Gardine, Kali Kwong, Jenna Andor, and Adrian Andor. Our first speaker is Jessica.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the ability to be here today. Thank you for listening to the concerns of the communities involved in this Phase 2 redistricting plan. My name is Jessica Wisner. I'm a mom of two girls at Belvidere Elementary School. I'm asking the board to vote against moving students from Belvidere to Arnold Elementary. This plan would move students from Belvidere to Arnold. And using the latest data that was provided by the board, it would take Belvidere, which is not overutilized, and place those students at Arnold Elementary. That school's utilization will go up to 94%. It's my understanding that the data does not include new construction around the area. There is currently new communities being built in the adjacent neighborhoods next to Arnold Elementary. So within the next few years, that utilization could go beyond 100%. And I ask the board to consider what happens at that point. Do they send our kids back to Belvidere? Do they send them to a new school? Is there a plan when Arnold exceeds 100% utilization? I've heard from teachers who work in schools that receive students during Phase 1, and they indicated that their class sizes went from manageable to overwhelming. And I fear that with the data that's being used now, that will happen again in some schools in this Phase 2 of redistricting. So I ask the board to look into the data that's being used and ensure that we're using the correct numbers to make sure that this is a long-term plan that benefits all of our students. I'd also know that the area being redistributed is geographically further away from Belvidere than it is from Arnold. The students will be on the bus for longer periods of time, including on Route 2 South, which is heavily congested. which is heavily congested and full of traffic in the morning, meaning schools' buses will likely be late, which is disruptive, to say the least, to both teachers and students. I ask the board to consider voting against moving students from Belvedere to Arnold. Our school- I thank the board for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Gardine.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Kwong. Redistricting us to Arundel Middle and High makes absolutely no sense. Whoever thought it was a good idea clearly hasn't thought about what it actually means for the students who have to live the decision. We spent our whole lives growing up together in the Crofton schools, building friendships, community, and a sense of belonging, and now we're just supposed to throw that away because of some numbers on a spreadsheet. The truth is, it's not just unfair, it's harmful. Splitting us up means tearing apart the friendships we had since elementary school. These aren't just friends. These are people we've grown up with, shared memories with, and leaned on for years. You can't just redraw a line on a map and expect us to pretend it doesn't matter. It does matter. Moving us to a completely different school community where we know almost no one would destroy the sense of comfort and connection we've worked so hard to build. And let's not even start on Route Three. Sending kids down that road every single day is just dangerous. There are constant accidents. Anyone who lives around here knows that. It's one of the most congested and unpredictable routes around. Forcing middle and high schoolers to travel that far on that road every morning and afternoon isn't just an inconvenience, it's putting us in harm's way. Crofton is our community. It's where we belong. We've earned our place here. Taking us out and sending us to Arundel isn't balancing enrollment, it's breaking up friendships and endangering students. Student member of the board, your title says you represent students, so represent us. Crofton students have made our voice impossible to ignore. Now we need you to use your seat to amplify us, not to mute us. The board keeps saying this redistricting is about community, but you can't preach community while you're the one tearing it apart. That's not leadership, that's hypocrisy. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jen Andor, mother of four in Crofton. For nine months, our community has shown up because the stakes for our children are real, yet we've seen inconsistencies in how data, safety, and public input are weighed. When Crofton Woods families opposed shifting students south, AACPS changed course immediately. But when hundreds of Nantucket families have spoken with the same urgency, public comment suddenly becomes just one factor. That selective listening undermines public trust. We've also seen inconsistencies in criteria themselves. Route Two concerns were enough to stop a redistricting decision, yet Route Three, faster, wider, more dangerous, and lacking safe crossings, has not received that same weight. Route Two has one-direction traffic per side, while Route Three has businesses turning traffic and cars approaching from both directions in both mediums. It is fundamentally more dangerous, and all of this is happening while AACPS is simultaneously conducting a Safe Roots to School study. If anything proves the inconsistencies, this is it. As you make your final decision, I urge you to stay grounded in the pillars you committed to uphold, said sincerely and with grace. A split articulation plan contradicts these pillars, and these inconsistencies can still be corrected. We're simply asking for fairness, the same objectives, standards, and decision-making that every other community has been given. Equity means consistent standards for every community. Safety means evaluating all risks, not selectively applying them. Inclusion means accounting for families who cannot stand here tonight, and transparency means answering the hard questions fully and honestly. Public comments matter, but they matter most when they reflect accurate data, lived experience, and what is truly right for children, not what is convenient for the county. We have shown the financial impact is minimal, but the emotional harm these children would face would be lifelong. You must make decisions grounded in facts, consistent with state funding laws, and align with the goals you say you want to achieve, which is capital improvements. This current plan does none of that, and I say this not as a warning, but certainly rooted in data. If this move is made, you will be here again in a few years, I personally guarantee, and with that, I urge you, please do not split in Nantucket.
Thank you. Adrian Andor.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Adrian Andor, father of four AACPS students. At the November third hearing, I spoke about safety and about the eight-thousand Route Three crossings my children would be forced to take tonight. I want to speak about another AACPS pillar, equity, because this proposal exposes just how fragile that pillar is. Since this plan was announced, I've heard families talk about selling or renting their homes to remain in the Crofton Middle and High feeder school, high school feeders. This isn't hypothetical. We know for a fact in our community alone, more than two houses have sold for this exact reason. Here's the uncomfortable truth: Families like mine have options. And I want to be clear, I have options. I would prefer not to use them, but many others do not. We bought when the interest rates were low. Our mortgages are far below today's rental prices. That means people like me can rent out our homes, make money, make profit, rent another place inside the feeder, and in some cases, come out financially, all while I build- while continuing to build wealth and equity on the property I keep. Most families cannot do that, nor should they be forced to try to. And just because I can afford to move, rent, or even buy another home does not make this plan equitable. It means that the only families who can solve this for split articulations are ones with resources. Equity cannot exist when privilege becomes the only escape route. And even if families like mine take advantage of the financial net, it doesn't change your numbers. As we've shown repeatedly, this plan is not about overcrowding, it is about underutilization. Your shifting children to create an appearance of need not to solve one. If your plan can only be avoided by those means, then your plan is not equitable. Reject this split articulation, stand by your own pillars, and choose a path that does not require families to buy, sell, rent, or relocate, simply to keep their children safer in the community where they belong. This pact, keeping the feeder intact, supports three AACPS pillars at once: safety, equity, and community. It is the only decision that truly aligns with the values you say guide you in this district. Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Beth Clark, Sheri Petry, Keisha George, Abby Cohen, and Andy Cohen. Our first speaker is Beth Clark. Beth Clark? Okay, Sheri.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Bedell, fellow community members. I am- my name is Sheri Petry, and I represent a small pocket off of Mill Swamp Road in the South River feeder school system. I am not gonna lie, I've been very impressed by this process. I know I'm probably going to be the minority here, but I fully support moving forward with the current proposal. I believe this uncertainty is draining our community. It is draining our energy. It is creating a lot of emotional whiplash that I think we're all just fatigued. We're all tired. And really, it needs to come to an end. I know this has not been an easy process. I really appreciate the fact that you all have given us ample opportunity to speak our voices, to be heard, and I truly do believe you have listened to us. You guys have made several iterations, and you have the data, you've done the research. I trust you to move forward with the current proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Keisha.
My name is Dr. Keisha George, and I'm a Crofton Cluster parent and an educator of nearly twenty-five years. When I was in the classroom, I taught science, and accuracy mattered, precision mattered. In science and in education, misinformation leads to failure. Board members, AACPS has given you misinformation. The narrative-driven BR3 split articulation is based on incorrect information about IAC funding. The claim that Arundel Middle requires Crofton students to move to receive state funding is not true. Here are a few reasons why. Number one, Arundel Middle and High sit inside a priority funding area. As a board member knows from her work on the 2040 Plan Planning Advisory Committee, this means that the site is already eligible for state-funded expansion. Number two, Arundel Middle is projected to reach one-hundred-and-eight percent utilization by 2034. Combined with Crofton Middle's utilization and five-hundred-plus new students projected in the M- excuse me, the Cluster, the expansion clearly qualifies. Number three, our correspondence with the IAC confirms that funding does not require all schools to be under one-hundred percent utilization. The public should not have to correct AACPS about IAC regulations, yet here we are. What sensitive does it make to move one-hundred-and-three Crofton Middle School students only to push Arundel Middle into crisis-level overcrowding? That is not planning, and do you truly believe that that is the intent of the IAC? And why move students from Crofton High when the corrective projections show utilization will decrease? To the COO, simply put, the math is not mathing. As educators, it's okay to admit when we're wrong and pivot. Now, will you provide corrective instructions so this board can make an informed decision and succeed? Board members, if you didn't know, you now know the information provided is incorrect. What are you going to do? Our children are depending on you. This is your test. You have the right information. You don't have to fail. Will you turn a blind eye, or will you do what's right? My hope is that you choose the latter.
Good evening. My name is Abby Cohen, but most of you know that already. As a matter of fact, I believe I've shaken each of your hands at one point or another. You've probably seen my various emails, and I would especially like to thank staff- (laughter) They're thoughtful responses. I've also interacted with most of you, not solely because of redistricting, but because I am a real person with hobbies and interests and aspirations similar to you all. I have seen through these wholesome interactions that you are all good people. If you wanted to serve adults, you would've ran for Congress, but no, you ran for the Board of Education to help students. But what you are doing is not good. Let me illustrate what the last two weeks have been like for me. I was in shock at the initial vote, and then I cried and cried and cried. I cried all night. The idea of returning to school, to the friends I will not have next year, was too much. I stayed home from school. I skipped practice, and I refused food. I'm sure kids from all the affected communities, although there aren't many, feel the same way. But the difference is, this will affect Nantucket every single year. Split articulation is an evil, cruel last resort that does not need to be resorted to. Every kid growing up in these select neighborhoods will go through this pain. No argument about money will ever justify this. I'm grateful that some of you understand this reality, but in front of me are five good people that voted against the physical and mental health of the students of Nantucket. I beg you to rethink this viewpoint, because as I hope I made apparent through my conversations with some of you, this entire process is built on uncertainty, misunderstandings, and shifting data. Nothing about permanently destroying our community accomplishes the arbitrary goals you set in February. I beg you to vote no to split articulation on Wednesday. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Andy Cohen. I have a rising junior and rising freshman in Crofton School. I empathize and sympathize with you. I empathize since, as a consultant formulating plans that are not always popular, I know how critical it is to thoroughly understand data I gather, use it correctly for the best trade-off of benefits and impacts, with transparent analysis and sound justification. My biggest fear is to find I misinterpreted or misused that data, thus coming to a completely erroneous conclusion not grounded in truth and fact. That is exactly where you find yourselves today. With the new understanding of the board's motivations and state funding formulas confirmed by the IAC and shared with all of you, we all now know that split articulation of Nantucket cannot move forward. It is fundamentally flawed and won't produce the benefits you thought it would. Supposed benefits to undo poor past choices, not even to help our kids now. All it does is harm our students emotionally, educationally, even potentially physically with the mess we call Route Three, and undermines our trust in AACPS leaders and would do so year after year. I sympathize with the board, as you have been unjustly misled, probably not nefariously, likely because those who have advised you were confused themselves. But knowing that BR3 is effectively invalid, you have no more excuses and must vote against it. We have been told repeatedly by board members, this is about facts more than emotions. Well, you have the verified facts, and you cannot ignore them. It's maddening that we even need to be here tonight to convince you of this obvious choice. This has consumed us for many months with sleepless nights, and even caused families, at least those with the means to do so, to initiate plans to move. But regardless of your self-imposed deadline this week, I sincerely hope and frankly demand you do what we teach our kids to do when they make a mistake. Admit it, apologize, and make it right. Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Chris Cavey, Molly Starensen, Zach Kimaniti, Tessa Kimaniti, and Marley DeMerg. Our first speaker, Chris Cavey.
Hi, my name is Chris Cavey, and I'm a Nantucket-Crofton parent. I'm here tonight to clear up two major points. The first is from the November fifth board meeting, and the second addresses a public quote from Saturday's Capital Gazette. When we're talking about splitting a community, clarity is key. Let's start with a November fifth Old Mill-Middle North example. The question was posed, "Have we had instances recently where funding was denied due to overcrowding?" The example for Old Mill-Middle North was given. We asked the IAC for clarification, and they said, "The state reduced funding for Old Mill because adjacent middle schools had too many open seats." So the answer to the question is no. Our only example of funding being denied was due to underutilization. Let me say it: Underutilization in adjacent schools reduces funding; overutilization in adjacent schools does not. So let's clarify Dr. Heiser's quote in the Capital Gazette. He referenced a hypothetical-
Please reference staff.
Okay, in the public paper.
No names, please.
He referenced- I don't have anymore. He referenced a hypothetical School A that's overcapacity and wants to expand School B with empty seats, implying Crofton High and South River High. There's one problem: No one is proposing to expand Crofton High. The scenario doesn't apply. Once again, we asked IAC, "Could leaving Crofton High overutilized adversely affect funding in other schools in the region?" And their response, the simple answer is no. Leaving Crofton High overutilized would not adversely affect funding for a modernization project at South River High or at other schools adjacent to Crofton High. So I'll say it again: Underutilization in adjacent schools reduces funding; overutilization in adjacent schools does not. So here's the bottom line: Crofton's enrollment does not threaten funding at any other school. You do not need to split articulate Nantucket to secure state funding. The IAC itself has confirmed this in writing. So you have the facts, you have IAC's own words, and none of them support breaking any communities apart. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Molly, and I'm a fifth grader at Nantucket. You might remember me from a few weeks ago when I talked about how I will not be able to go to Crofton Middle School if your plan passes. That's why I'm here again today. Everyone here is fighting to stay, and our parents have been able to prove why we can stay. I've cried lately and been super stressed because of this. And it's only November. I can't imagine what it will feel like in June. I am moving up to middle school next year, and as you may know, middle school is already a big step up from elementary school. Over the six years at Nantucket, I've been supported by my friends. They help me belong. I'll be honest, some days, the only reason why I even want to go to school is because my friends are there for me. At first, I thought that all of Nantucket would be moving to Arundel, but when I found out that it was only a small group, I nearly lost my mind. My brother is a seventh grader at Crofton Middle School. He is also being moved, right in the middle of middle school. How is that fair? When I have kids someday, I don't want this to be my story to them. My mom and dad have fun stories from their childhood. This will be something I want to forget. We still have not heard a good reason why this has to happen. Please stop. I could've been home playing with my friends, but I decided to come here to stand up for myself and my community. Thanks for your time, and please think before you vote. Thank you.
My name is Zach Kimaniti, and since this process started, the Crofton community has asked numerous questions that we still do not have answers to. To name just a few, what is the formula that was used to get projections for Crofton High School and Middle School? We don't know. What does AACPS project the enrollment will be in seven or ten years at redistricted schools after you redistrict? We don't know. How will the diversity change at each school with the redistricting changes? We don't know. You dismissed making eleventh graders legacy students, but we still don't know how many eleventh graders would have been impacted. And yet, we know the following to be true: The formulas used to determine funding for school capital improvements do not account for overutilized seats. Enrollment in the Crofton Cluster is declining. Crofton High School is fully functional and serves all its current students with no need for portable classrooms. Even I know that freeing up space at Crofton, one of the newest high schools in the county- Even I know that freeing up space at Crofton, one of the newest high schools in the county, just to overcrowd a Rundle, one of the oldest, makes no sense. If you pass this redistricting plan, you will be moving me as I enter eighth grade out of a slightly overcrowded middle school into a Rundle where my sole purpose is to make it more overcrowded. You will push a Rundle middle to the highest level of overcapacity it has ever seen. So I'd like to ask you one more question. If you've been given so few answers to very important questions, and literally all the facts tell you that moving kids to a Rundle doesn't solve your problems, why would you ever think that split articulating Nantucket Elementary would be a good solution? The answer is simple. It's not. Many students like me have been watching. I've sat with my mom and dad for hours to truly understand what is going on, and I can tell you this. If you had a board of students up there, we would make a good decision. Please don't let us down. Please, please make a good, fact-based decision, and don't split my community. Thank you.
Tessa.
My name is Tessa, and I'm a second grader at Nantucket Elementary. Since February, I've been so worried. I do not want to leave my friends behind when I go to middle school. Nine months is a long time for a little kid like me to feel scared and worried. You've had nine months to make a good decision. I know in the last week, the grownups who have been working so hard on this have given you a lot of new information. But now you have that information, and you need to make a good decision based on that information. Everything that everyone has said shows that splitting Nantucket would be terrible for kids. It doesn't help you achieve your goals, and you don't have a good reason to do it. You can make a good decision on Wednesday. You don't have to make this go on longer. I just want to have a good Thanksgiving and a good Christmas where I don't have to worry anymore. Please make a decision on Wednesday, and please do not split up kids in the Nantucket community.
Marley.
Good evening. I'm Marleya DeMerg. I'm a mother to a senior sophomore and fifth grader in Crofton Schools currently. Your current plan directly and immediately affects both my daughters. Please vote no and remove the split articulation of Nantucket. Although you may feel allergic to red from Crofton right now, I hope you're still listening, I think the volume of testimony demonstrates our community commitment. When you announced your amendments and board recommendations initially, united to collectively protect as many of the students as you could, and finally provide the first options that did not split articulate our small section of Nantucket students. You heard our testimony, evaluated the revised data, and acted. I appreciated what appeared to be a reanalysis and correction. As an auditor, my entire career is focused on promoting change and improvement through understanding accurate data, clear communication, and transparency. But the discussion around your announcement of this latest plan was confused and chaotic without clear communication, understanding, or transparency. Please don't remove the children of our community. I grew up an Army brat, attending two middle schools and four high schools. I experienced firsthand the lasting negative impacts when only a small number of children changed schools. I chose stability and community for my family because schools play a large role in shaping a child's life. Education is a whole experience. Classes, sports, music, theater, clubs, activities, teachers, and friends. When students are moved in the middle of high school, students lose connection and can feel overlooked and rejected for something out of their control. On top of that, these new students won't have their friends with them for support. Please listen to the children, these brave ones that speak here from here and have met with you, that share their experiences on behalf of their peers and the students to come after them. I've been impressed with the number of students testifying on their own behalf, and those are their friends. It demonstrates the community value of empowering this generation to reject the antiquated belief that they sit quietly on the sidelines while grownups make decisions and facting them.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Corinna DeMerg, Alexis Martin, Katie Walsh, Matt Walsh, and Henry Walsh. Our first speaker is Corinna.
Hello, everybody. My name is Corinna DeMerg, and I'm a fifth grader.
Can you pull the mic a little bit closer down to you?
I know many people have talked to about the redistricting, but this is my perspective. I've watched my brother and sister go through middle school, and I know it's been hard for them. But as long as you have friends who support you, you'll be fine. And I have friends at all the schools that are going to Crofton Middle School, from soccer to lacrosse to field hockey to my summer camps. My friends from soccer, from my soccer team have been looking forward to finally getting all to go to the middle school. We all have been singing at the Crofton Choral Connections with our older siblings and our friends there. From all the Crofton schools, they've talked to us about joining the chorus programs at the middle school, high school, and where we're supporting an exciting singing. But you're saying we have to move to a whole new school, reset our friendships, our schedules? I don't even know anyone who goes to a Rundle. We will have to start over completely. And I'm worried about getting to get home, because what happens if the bus driver is out sick? What happens if the bus breaks down? How will I get home safely? Rundle is far away, and Route Three is too dangerous to walk across, and it isn't safe to get home. For Crofton Middle, there is sidewalks to keep us safe the entire way home, but it is a long walk and bike. Please don't take this away from everyone, and I know we have all been prepared to elementary school.
Alexis.
Hi, my name is Alexis Martin, and I'm a sophomore at Crofton High School. While I may not personally be moved, all my close friends will be, which affects me personally, because I've finally found a good community that supports me. Until a few years ago, I'd been moved every so often due to being the child of an active-duty Marine. I'd been taken out of schools and forced to put in, been forced to put in the new ones. I'd been forced to make new friends in new places, which was very difficult. I'd finally found a good community with good friends who support me no matter what I do. Your proposal takes away the comfort and family I've finally established after so many new schools, new countries, new states, and new places. Please don't split us apart. And one last thing. I invite each of you to go and sit on the intersection at Route Three in Riedel Road, and sit there and look at the traffic that is there between the hours of when we would go to school and come home. Out of all the places I've been, Route Three has been the most dangerous and congested highway I've seen. Thank you.
Katie.
Good evening. My name is Katie Walsh, and I'm the mom of four AACPS students, two of whom are about to speak as well. I'm here to plead with you not to split up the Nantucket and Crofton community respectfully. Our neighborhood would stay in the Crofton Theater, but so many in our Nantucket family would be adversely affected. As a community, Crofton worked for decades for a high school to be built. I went to board in neighborhood meetings lobbying for the effort to build Crofton High School, and we rejoiced when this was approved. I attended the redistricting meetings to decide the attendance boundaries, and we were so excited when the Crofton community was going to stay together. Friendships that were forged in preschool, sports, and other activities would be able to last and grow over time. And over the last five years, the bonds within our community have deepened. Friendships have been able to thrive knowing that preschool friends and teammates would meet again in elementary school or at least middle and high school. We forged traditions with Cardinals First Flight and the Crofton Theater chorus concerts and senior walks cheering on teams at Crofton High School. It's everything and more we work towards. But now there's the prospect of the rug we've woven over time getting pulled out from under us. Some things I ask you to please consider before you make this decision. Natural boundaries, there's a reason that Route Three was a natural boundary when Crofton was first districted for attendance. These bus routes with all of the heavy traffic and all of the construction, it's getting worse every day. I went to a high school that was different than my younger siblings. My older brother and I, we were split. I went through something very similar. It was very difficult for my family. I don't want this for any family. And I am sincerely asking you to really think about all the families and the kids who would be affected by the choices that you make, and I appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Matt Walsh.
Hello, Board. Dr. Burdell, thank you for being here today. Hello, my name is Matthew Walsh, and I'm a senior at Crofton High School. I come from a family of four boys, Henry, Sully, and my newest brother, Timmy. He's 10. We are a Nantucket family, and Timmy's just finishing up his time there as a fifth grader. Tonight, I'm speaking not just as a student, but as a brother. I've grown up in this community, surrounded by the same friends for over a decade, friends who have shaped who I am, but my little brother may not have that same experience. While Timmy will still attend Crofton High, many of his closest friends, the kids he's grown up with, he'll be separated from them. When children lose the friends who make them feel seen and supported, it changes more than their school. It changes their world. Budgets can be rewritten, money can be raised, but childhood memories and friendships cannot be replaced. If Timmy loses the friends who have been his constant since kindergarten, he will struggle, not because he's weak, but because those friendships anchor him in who he is. Disrupting that risks far more than grades. It endangers their mental health, motivation, and sense of belonging. Our community is built on relationships, not boundary lines. Children are not numbers to be moved for convenience. They're human beings who deserve stability and connections. This has been a tiring and exhausting process for all of us. While this may be right, I will never stop fighting for my family in this community. If you say you stand for the kids, I say prove it. So please vote no on splitting up the Nantucket family. Protect the friendships and joy that these children share, because those are things no budget can ever replace. Thank you.
Henry.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to ask the board to reconsider the proposal to split articulation for the neighborhoods currently feeding into the Nantucket Elementary School. I live in Briarly, which is the last neighborhood on Riedel Road that would remain in the Crofton High School District under the current proposal. I attended Nantucket-Crofton Middle and graduated Crofton High School in 2024. I have three younger brothers that go to all of these schools. When I attended Nantucket, talk began about the possibility of a new school in Crofton. At the time, students who lived in Crofton were split between Anna Rundle and South River. The idea that Crofton kids could consolidate into one high school was exciting. In middle school, the feeling quickly vanished when we realized Crofton was being redistricted under a new proposition. Our neighborhood would not be able to attend the new school. It was a surreal experience after fighting so hard to get the school built in the first place. But our community came together to combat that proposal. In eighth grade, I spoke to this board to consider that redistricting plan. In time, a plan was selected that allowed all Crofton kids to attend Crofton High School. That was six years ago, and now Crofton's students are at risk of being redistricted again. Two hundred and eighty-seven students who may not be able to go to Crofton High School. I know the anxiety that they are feeling at the thought of being separated from friends, community, and educators. I asked the board to make the same decision they made when I was in middle school, to keep Crofton together. I asked that you put an end to this unnecessary cycle and remove from consideration any plans that split up the Crofton community in future redistricting efforts. Sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Shabon Madison, Megan Williams, Richard Nines, Annabella Nines, and Danny Mays.
Mr. President, with all due respect, can we correct the record regarding being able to say our names to the public? Thank you.
Yes, we can. It was earlier stated that we ask folks to please refrain from mentioning members, board members' names, and actually as elected officials, if you choose to do so, you may do so. But we do remind you about staff. Thank you. Okay. Shabon Madison.
Good evening, and thank you for this time. I'm Siobhan Madison, mom to a Crofton High graduate and a Crofton 10th grader and 8th grader. The recent reference to the splitting of our community as the Nantucket thing got me thinking that perhaps we're being seen simply as a disgruntled group of students, parents, and community members who are unreasonable and upset because they aren't getting their way. The reality is that continuing to support the devastating split of the Crofton community is what's unreasonable. And given the law demands the board adopt a plan that's not arbitrary and unreasonable, this poses a problem. No reasonable mind would think that splitting Crofton serves the greater good when its own data shows that not only is Crofton enrollment going down, but that the split only moves the overuse problem from one cluster to another. A further round of redistricting will be necessary in just a few years. Anyone with even a cursory understanding of this process knows that kicking the can down the road is not for the greater good. No reasonable mind would think that splitting Crofton serves the greater good of funding capital improvement projects in other parts of the county when it's now been shown that splitting Crofton will do no such thing. No reasonable mind would choose to split Crofton when the funding problem is driven by underutilization, not overutilization. The community asked, and the IAC responded. Capital improvement projects in other parts of the county can still be funded without moving our children to the Crofton cluster. The board's obligation in redistricting decisions is not to adopt the perfect plan. This is a complicated endeavor, and no such thing exists. The board's obligation is to exercise its discretion to come up with a plan that it thinks will best achieve its stated goals and make a decision that reasonable minds would agree on. Given that, given all that's been presented, especially that moving students to the Arundel Cluster has no rational connection to funding capital improvement projects, choosing the most brutal option of splitting Crofton is the very definition of unreasonable, and I urge the board to reject it. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Williams.
Good evening. My name is Megan White-Williams. I'm a Crofton resident, a mother of three. I have two that are at Nantucket, and I have one that is at Crofton Middle. I'm just going to cut to the chase. I'm appalled that those who have the county continue to insist that the board vote on something as life-changing as redistricting with grossly incorrect data. It's reckless. The facts are, the county has presented us with the arguments that Crofton High School is overcrowded. Data provided to you has proven that that is false. Existing home sales are driving enrollment increases in Crofton. Data provided to you has proven that that is false. Enrollment projections are increasing. Data provided to you has proven that that is false. The county has argued that Crofton must be pushed below capacity so that other schools may receive funding. Data directly from the IAC has proven again that that is false. A board member has argued that Route Three is safe. Data has been provided to you that that is false. So what is the real motive behind the redistricting here? Because we would all love to know that, given all of the hard facts and information evident, it does not justify split articulation. The reality is, is that if you move forth with redistricting, our children are going to grow up on the outside looking in. We own our homes, we live our lives day in and day out in Crofton, and yet part of us is going to be attached to a Rundle. As a child of the Air Force, this was my childhood experience, having to mold myself into communities where relationships were already set and established, never home, always an outsider. And I can tell you from experience, that type of childhood comes at a price, but you have the opportunity to make it right. I implore you to keep all of the Nantucket and Crofton, make it make sense because it doesn't. Thank you.
Richard Nines.
Good evening. I'm Richard Nines, father of three girls, resident of Glen Isle in Reva. I appreciate Ms. Pullums and Ms. Dentz, I like to say your names, direct questions on our behalf last week to clarify some facts. However, here we are again, and why? What is the goal? What is the requirement? And how does moving us achieve either of those? The only logical reason that any of us can think of is that you, Ms. Pullum, are fearful of our schools not being able to be eligible for the state funding due to potential future overutilizations, which is understandable. However, words can't even describe my thoughts and feelings after finding out that overutilization has zero impact on IAC funding calculations. So to be clear, if DES operates near at or even slightly above 100%, it has no effect on funding for our current or future capital projects. So armed with this pivotal piece of information, along with notification on November 12th that the state approved increase to state-rated capacity for DES, we are now at 99% without having to move anyone. having to move anyone. There is unequivocally zero current rationale or reason to permanently move any of our children unnecessarily that will tear our community apart and create lasting psychological issues. None, period. Historical enrollment patterns at DES after the 2012 redistricting noted a previous spike in temporarily elevated enrollment. In 2014, it was even higher than it is today, followed by a downtrend. The current enrollment numbers reflect a normal transitory trend for our school. With little housing turnover or development over the past several years, expect that to continue. The facility master plan can even remotely be able to be relied upon. Unofficial enrollment numbers show 20 less students this year than predicted. This trend will continue. Twenty-seven children is one student per classroom. It doesn't make a difference. Please vote no. Thank you.
Annabella.
Hi, my name is Annabella Nines from Glen Isle and Reva, a 7th grader at Central Middle, the oldest daughter of a military family, here to speak for my sisters Lila, a 4th grader at Davinsonville Elementary, and Phoebe, future kindergartner. Glen Isle was not in the original three scenarios. We were surgically selected to be removed, breaking the trust we put in staff and this Board. Use any official words you'd like, it feels like betrayal. You voted against my sister Lila staying for her last year at Davinsonville Elementary. My sister has watched 5th graders for years, including me. She knows exactly what she'll miss, the traditions, the graduations, walking beside her friends. There's something powerful about watching your siblings experience the same traditions you did, seeing them at 5th grade promotion, their final strings concert, in the same place you made those same memories. That connection across years, sometimes even across generations at Glen Isle, all the moments that make school feel like family, not just a building. That's what you're taking from us. Staff, you've all been to school, you've experienced these moments at yours. Please vote no on our necessary move so my sister will not have to lose that. Over 250 people have testified against this redistricting plan, including students like me who have yet to hear a solid, logical reason why this is necessary. It's not because funding or overcrowding. Davinsonville is at 99% with new state-rated capacity, so why are you still moving forward if there's no logical reason to tear communities apart? Confucius once said, "The man who moves a mountain begins by carrying away small stones." Mountain symbolize strength, unity, and greatness, and all of us from all AACPS schools are part of this. We are what makes it great. I'm just a pebble, so is Lila, so is Phoebe, so are our staff, teachers, and principals. The fate of these pebbles of this entire mountain are in your hands. Moving this mountain isn't solving the problem, it's creating new ones. Please keep Glen Isle at Davinsonville Elementary. You tell us to belong, grow, and succeed. We do belong at Davinsonville. We are growing and succeeding there. But now, now you're deciding we need to do it all over again somewhere else. Please don't make us start over. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Danny Mays. At last Thursday's hearing and again tonight, parents and students exposed fundamental flaws in the rationale behind this plan, performing the due diligence the Board should have completed months ago. They also exposed a central myth. The IAC confirms no magic trigger unlocks additional guaranteed funding. Even the Capital Gazette's own reporting, built on hypotheticals rather than criteria, could not sustain that narrative. And looking around this room tonight, it's clear the community is here for real facts, not hypotheticals. The notion that this split is a strategic pathway to additional funding is misguided. Meanwhile, it would push students out of their community, onto dangerous roads, and into overcrowded schools for years, long before any new building would possibly exist. Families have repeatedly requested the enrollment assumptions, projection methodology, and traffic analyses behind this plan. Much of that remains unclear, unavailable, or just plain incorrect. If the public cannot see or verify the work, it cannot trust the decision. Which leads us to the core issue. A decision becomes arbitrary and capricious when it ignores established facts, relies on incomplete information, or cannot reasonably be explained. BR3 exemplifies that definition. That is not an opinion, it is a description of the record. The families of these 287 Crofton students did not move. They have simply been placed in the wrong column of a flawed spreadsheet. This is decision time. The rationale behind this split has collapsed under public scrutiny. The Board has an obligation to step back, reassess, and decide based on the facts at hand, not the assumptions that have led us here. Please reject this split. Reject it because the facts don't support it. Reject it because the concerns raised have revealed significant weaknesses in its foundation. Reject it because these students deserve better than an arbitrary and capricious plan. Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Jamie Sterenson, Carly Johnson, Angela Tippelman, Alexis Jenkins, and Bentley Clark.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Sterenson, and I'm a parent of a 5th grader at Nantucket and a 7th grader at Crofton Middle. Additionally, I have two nieces in the Rundle Cluster, one a 4th grader at Two Rivers and one 7th grader at Rundle Middle. We have already illustrated in black and white how harmful your split articulation plan would be for Crofton kids. While there are no proposed changes at Rundle, that doesn't mean your redistricting plan wouldn't profoundly harm the Rundle kids as well. You are moving kids from Crofton Middle, a school that's slightly overutilized, to a Rundle Middle, a school projected to be overutilized next year. Moving the overcapacity problem from one cluster to another does nothing to solve the utilization issue our superintendent spoke about to the Gazette. Plus, somehow, you've forgotten that Odenton continues to see huge development, meaning Rundle will be overcapacity with or without Crofton kids. By now, we've all learned that Crofton being overutilized does not take $1 of funding away from any proposed projects at Rundle. The only benefit to Rundle is a nominal amount of additional funding, about $103,000 per year for 15 years, but only if the county were willing to contribute another $1.5 million of their own. This is not free money. Meanwhile, the kids who are unlucky enough to be at a Rundle Middle, like my nieces, and the students you forced to move there, like mine, will have it worse than any other middle school student in the county. Severe overcrowding with the promise of a larger school in the future does nothing for these kids. Most importantly, if Ms. McDermott doesn't support this plan, no Board member should. The only supposed benefit is to her district, and even she knows there's far more harm than good to all students at Rundle Middle. So I urge you, before you make a regrettable mistake, vote to reject this redistricting plan. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Carly Johnson, and my son attends Davinsonville Elementary. On Wednesday, you will be voting on BR3. We are asking you, pleading with you, to vote no, or at a minimum, pause approval until the updated information can be reviewed. With new information now available, this redistricting change is simply not necessary. Since the last meeting, only one option remains, and it still removes our 27 children from DES. These aren't numbers on a chart, these are kids who are thriving where they are. When my 6-year-old sobs because he thinks he will lose his friends, his teachers, and his sense of belonging, those tears are real. The anxiety, the confusion, the fear he expresses, that is the emotional cost of this process on children who have done nothing wrong, and it is a cost that does not need to be paid. We have also learned that the data being used to justify this move has proven to be incorrect. Capacity projections have shifted repeatedly. The threshold concerns regarding funding are not accurate. Removing 27 students, less than one student per classroom, simply will not have a meaningful impact on capacity, funding, or long-term planning, but it will significantly impact the well-being of these children. This week, concerns were raised publicly about the proposed changes at Nantucket. We are facing the same exact issues of flawed data and disruption, just on a much smaller scale. If hundreds of students can prompt that level of public scrutiny, then the concerns of 27 children should not be dismissed simply because our number is smaller. Our community has done everything you have asked us. We have attended every meeting, we left comments, many of which were never published or acknowledged. We made calls, sent emails, gave tours, and participated in every step of this process, and still, we were never offered alternatives or a true opportunity to be heard. It is okay to correct course. It is okay to reconsider when new information shows that the original path was not the right one. We are simply asking for fairness, for transparency, for decisions rooted in accurate data and in what is best for our children. It is your absolute responsibility to do the right thing.
Your time has expired. Angela Tippelman.
Good evening, I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no on the split articulation of Nantucket Elementary. Throughout this redistricting process, you've received extensive community input, and no community has shown up more consistently or passionately than Nantucket. Meeting after meeting, we have spoken, shared data, and offered real solutions. Our message has been clear and unwavering. The community does not support split articulation, the data does not support it, and it simply does not need to happen. Yet, as this process has unfolded, we've watched many communities be heard and ultimately removed from redistricting considerations, many communities except Nantucket. During the listening sessions, staff indicated that community voices would guide the recommendations, and they did, for every community except ours. Split articulation was removed elsewhere in the county, but despite compelling testimony from the Nantucket parents and children, the burden was placed squarely on us. When a Board member proposed an amendment affecting the Annapolis Cluster, those families spoke out and you listened. The amendment was withdrawn. We are simply asking for the same fairness and the same willingness to correct course. Split articulation causes real harm. It fractures belonging, destabilizes friendships, and impacts student well-being. For Nantucket, it introduces stress not once, but every year at the elementary level, something no other community has been asked to endure. Nantucket has shown up. Nantucket has spoken. We have made emotional, safety-based, legal, and data-driven arguments. We have presented viable alternatives, and still this harmful process proposal remains. You have acknowledged the trauma this process has caused and the desire for the community to begin healing, but healing cannot happen when our children are set to be re-traumatized year after year. So as I close, let me be clear. Don't force on us something you have not been willing to impose on any other community in the county, and I beg you to vote no on the split articulation of Nantucket Elementary.
Alexis Jenkins.
Good evening, my name is Alexis Jenkins, and I'm asking you to vote against the split articulation for Nantucket. Crofton is a very transient area, but I actually grew up there, and I went to Crofton Middle School, and I'm a Rundle High alum. So I know what an hour bus ride on Route 3 from Crofton to Rundle is at 7:10 in the morning, because I've lived it. I'm now a mother of a 12- and a 13-year-old, and I live several bikeable minutes from the front door of a Crofton Middle and Crofton High. The school this county made us beg for, decade after decade, for over 35 years. So we begged, and we pay taxes on empty fields, and we were on empty fields, and we're always told, "Just wait, one day Crofton will have its own high school, and kids will never have to cross that highway again." And then Crofton High finally opened, and then all the sidewalks came. So there was a lot of infrastructure built, and it was built for the unbreakable promise that the children who live here will go to school here. Now, less than three years later, the same county that asked us to wait 35 years is preparing to do something no Board has ever done, to split articulate, so that some Nantucket students after 5th grade get on buses and cross a six-lane, vision-zero priority corridor we spent a lifetime trying to escape. I don't think that WXY consultants knew about the 12 fatalities on Route 3 in 10 years, or the 1,100 crashes, because the plan you vote on would add another 184 of our most vulnerable residents to that gamble every single morning forever, for roughly $100,000 a year in state aid. That money will vanish the moment families with their moving trucks and private school tuition changes the course. But I rode that bus from Crofton to Rundle, and I won't do that to my children. We moved our family and our business to Crofton because of the promise of a high school that was finally kept. Our neighborhood's enrollment numbers were used in every projection that justified the $135-plus million Crofton High construction. Now it feels like the metrics are just being rearranged to maximize funding somewhere else, instead of honoring the safety realities on the ground. There's a safe path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bentley Clark. Just move it closer to us.
My name is Bentley Clark, and I'm a 4th grader at Folcher-McKenzie Elementary School in Severna Park. Please let us stay at our school. If we moved it next year, it would only be for one year, and then we would have to move again the year after that. At the new school, I wouldn't know anyone. Everything would be brand-new to me. At Folcher, I already know my friends, my teachers, the staff, and their routines, and they know me. I have gone to Folcher my whole life, and it feels like home. I play an instrument, I'm in the talent show, and I love our field trips. I don't know if the new school has the same programs, or if I'd get the same chances to do the things I look forward to. Next year, I'll be in 5th grade, and I want to graduate with my friends. One of our 5th grade teachers even wrote a special song just for the 5th graders. I've watched the older kids sing it with him every year, and I'd want to do it too. This plan makes me sad. I'm sad my friends would be at a different school. I'm sad I would miss the traditions I have grown up watching, and I am sad I would not get to see my friends before and after school at SAC like I do now. Please give the kids like me, the rising 5th graders, the option to stay at their school. Please untake away my last year at the school I've grown up in. Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Mark Adamczyk, Joel Messer, Brittany Kozlowski, Tiffany Burrell, and Stephen Chittenden. Speaking first will be Mark.
Good evening. Dr. Bedell, I commend you for opening the meeting the way you did. You never have to justify to me attending a family function, ever. As a matter of fact, that's where I should be tonight. My daughter Peyton, who you heard from, is attending her Crofton soccer banquet right now as we speak, but I'm here fighting for her, a memory I will never have with her tonight. At the November 5th Board meeting, a member said, "Sometimes you vote with your head and sometimes you vote with your heart." Well, I'm happy to report tonight that everyone can vote a legacy option for juniors and against split articulating with your heart and your head. You've heard countless testimonials that pulled the heartstrings harder than you ever can imagine. As a 27-year career public safety official, I learned the number-one way to erode public trust is giving answers to questions that aren't true and appear to manipulate the data in one's favor. At that hearing, a Board member asked, "What are the options to leave Nantucket in the Crofton feeder, and what are the impact?" The chief operating officer and director of facilities talked for 10 minutes, did not provide you one answer, and instead, they referenced the first proposal from WXY that isn't even on the table anymore, months ago. Another Board member asked, "Does removing split articulation impact funding for the entire county?" The answer is no. However, the director of facilities said, "It depends," and then tried to explain his way out of a wrong answer. As a fellow public servant, we are not expected to be perfect. We are expected to be accurate and forthcoming. Once it's determined that a decision was being considered based on false pretenses, we acknowledge it, we course correct, and make the right decision. There's tremendous honor in that. We trust that the Board values our children, will not sacrifice them based on erroneous funding scenarios and hypotheticals. I ask you uphold the integrity of the process, vote with your head and your heart, offering legacy options for juniors, and not split-articulate Nantucket. Thank you.
Joel Messer.
Good evening, my name is Joel Messer, and I want to address the Capital Gazette article published on November 14th regarding the IAC logic. The article and statements both by the superintendent and the COO support Crofton's community's assertion that split articulating in Nantucket is not necessary. The superintendent said, quote, "This is about trying to make sure we adhere to the commission's policies around balancing schools and making sure we address available seats. Otherwise, we don't get funding to do other projects that serve the greater good." This is exactly what the Crofton community is asserting. The current plan to split articulate in Nantucket does not address the available seats at South River and Southern. It simply makes a Rundle Middle and high school more crowded. The COO added, quote, "The IAC does consider both overcrowding and underutilization when reviewing requests. Overcrowding at a school does not automatically ensure IAC funding for a project. Preference of school funders has historically been that a school district should fill empty seats prior to requesting funding to expand an overcrowded school." Again, exactly. This is exactly what we're saying. It doesn't make sense to split articulate in Nantucket and overcrowd Rundle. Both of these statements align with what the parents who spoke directly to the IAC were told. High enrollment in Crofton does not threaten funding for proposed projects in a Rundle Middle or South River High. These are the only two proposed school projects that Crofton's utilization actually touches between now and 2032. The bottom line is that the AACPS needs to find ways to fill the 625 open seats that are projected to be in South River in 2034 and the 232 open seats at Southern, not the 45 seats at Rundle High. The justification for splitting in ticket simply does not hold. Moving 80 to 90 students doesn't meaningfully change any IAC metric and does nothing to improve funding outcomes. This proposal would make my neighborhood the only split-articulated community in the entire county, permanently separating children from their peers for no measurable benefit. benefit. Please make a responsible decision for our kids. They deserve stability.
Brittany Kozlowski.
Preston Sitworth, am I allowed to say your name?
Yes, you may.
Okay. My name is Brittany Kozlowski, and I am the parent of a 4th grader at Nantucket Elementary and a 7th grader at Crofton Middle School. Mr. Sitworth, your board policy profile says, and I quote, "Mr. Sitworth believes in the power of relationships. Success, he believes, depends on building solid relationships with students, staff, colleagues, parents, and community. Everyone in this room agrees with those values. Tonight, we are asking you to stand by them." Let me tell you what that actually looks like in our schools. I serve as the community events chair for both Nantucket Elementary and Crofton Middle. I organize the school dances, the fun runs, skate night, the very events that help children and families feel connected and engaged. I have spent years building the relationships you highlight as essential to student success. This is my community. My roots are here, my commitment to these students is here, and splitting the Nantucket feeder pattern contradicts the principles that you emphasize. It fractures relationships that support our children socially, emotionally, and academically. AACPS has spoken in broad theoretical terms about financial gain, but has provided no concrete evidence, calculations, or proof to support the claims. However, the evidence our community has provided, the math, the IAC citations, and AACPS's own projections, shows one thing clearly: The juice is not worth the squeeze. You do not need to move our children, our students, our children to secure funding. You do not fix underutilization by sending Nantucket kids to Arundel, but you do make Arundel overcrowded for a nominal 3% gain. Instead of addressing those facts, this proposed threatens to break apart a stable, high-performing, tight-knit community. Please, if you believe in the power of relationships, so do I, and so does every parent behind me. We're asking you to vote in a way that honors your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Burrell, and I am the mom of a 3rd grader at Nantucket. You've heard extensive testimony about why split-articulating Nantucket Elementary is unnecessary and how underutilization is the real issue in AACPS. I'm someone who believes that if you identify a problem, you must also offer a solution. I'd like to present a true win-win solution that directly addresses underutilization without requiring a single child to move. Let me say that again: No child will move with this proposed solution. The premise is simple. Crofton High currently houses the AACPS Office of School Performance, which is an administrative function of AACPS, not of Crofton High. That should not be taking up valuable space at that school. The solution is a straightforward, two-step move. Step 1: Move the Office of School Performance to South River, where we all know there is ample space. Step 2: Move the Crofton High School Career Center and Guidance Offices into the space vacated by the Office of School Performance, thus consolidating student services and freeing up additional rooms in the main building for classroom instruction. To be clear, we are not suggesting that simply moving the Office of School Performance will solve the problem. We recognize those offices cannot be used as classrooms, and that's exactly why both steps are necessary, and fortunately, both are very easy to execute. The spaces vacated by the Career Center and Guidance Offices are already equipped with desks and exceed the criteria for classroom designation. This proposal is truly a win-win. It frees up much-needed classroom space at Crofton High and increases the school's SRC. It helps address underutilization at South River, which is essential for future funding and improvements at both Southern and South River High Schools. And most importantly, it achieves all of this without split-articulating Nantucket and without moving a single student. If the board is aware that a viable student-centered alternative exists and AACPS chooses not to pursue it, that responsibility lies with them, but that should not lead you to approve a plan that forces split articulation at Nantucket simply because other solutions weren't considered by AACPS. Thank you.
Stephen.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Chittenden. I'm here today to urge you to reject the proposed redistricting plan that would split apart the Crofton community and, in particular, the Nantucket area of Crofton. Many others tonight have noted that the board is operating under a cloud of misinformation. As they've made clear, the Crofton redistricting plan makes no meaningful difference in state funding for proposed capital projects, none. But I want to assume just for a minute that it does, even though IAC staff has confirmed that it, in fact, does not. Let's assume that somehow the quote-unquote "overutilization" in the Crofton cluster does meaningfully impact state funding. We've already presented evidence to the board that the projected utilization percentages for Crofton schools are higher than reality. Indeed, class sizes at the Crofton feeder schools have been declining. The district's own data shows this. There is zero dispute about this fact. Even district staff agrees. Look at the data on Slide 37 that was presented at the August 18th redistricting workshop. It shows clearly that enrollment is declining across the Crofton cluster. Yet, the staff insists that students will magically appear in the future, but we can tell that this isn't actually happening. The projected jump in 2025 didn't materialize. The October 15th enrollment update shows preliminary enrollment at Crofton High School, Crofton Meadows, and Crofton Elementary School all declined with no meaningful enrollment gains across the cluster. We're not asking you to trust us. We're asking you to trust your own data and recognize that the increasing enrollment projections for the Crofton cluster are simply wrong. There's no database need to impose the social, emotional, and academic harms of split articulation on a small number of children from our community. There's only one correct decision based on your own data: Do not split-articulate Nantucket.
Our next five speakers are Fatima Kroy McIntyre, Hannah Heckinger, Peter Chang, Amber Kwong, and Brett Sterensen. Fatima.
Members of the board, I live in the Nantucket community, and like many of my neighbors, who you've all heard from tonight, I've spent many months agonizing over this Phase II redistricting plan. When you draw lines that split a neighborhood, you don't just affect school assignments, you draw a line between those who can afford a solution and those who can't. In Nantucket, many of us have now been zoned out of the Crofton Middle and Crofton High School and are being sent to a different feeder pattern. But for some of the families in our neighborhood, the ones with the financial resources, the answer is simple. They'll sell their homes and move three miles down the road into the part of Crofton that keeps them exactly where they want to be. They're buying their way out of your decision, and I don't blame them. If I and many of my other neighbors had the same exact option, then we'd do the same thing, just to make sure that we could secure stability for our children. But my family and many others in our community are tethered to this spot. We can't afford the moving cost, the higher mortgage, and the sudden property spikes this very districting is causing. For us, the split, for us, the split isn't just an inconvenience. It's an isolating, deeply inequitable choice that separates us from our established social and educational network. You rejected a proposal to allow 11th, 5th, and 8th graders to be legacy students because, in your own words, "Not everyone would be able to take advantage of it." Well, split-articulating students has the exact same problem. This current plan essentially uses economic mobility as the deciding factor for our students' education. If you're wealthy enough, you dodge the bullet. If you're not, you absorb the disruption. Board members, look beyond the numbers and see the lasting damage this decision will affect on families that are financially trapped. You have the power to create a plan that prioritizes stability for all of our students, not just the ones whose parents can afford to move their home. Please reject this plan and stop the systemic isolation of families just like mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Heckinger.
Good evening, board members. My name is Hannah, and I'm a sophomore at Crofton High. There's one main thing that I want to talk about while I'm here today: Mental health. It is extremely common for teenagers to, for teenagers to struggle with their mental health. Stress, of course, only makes it worse. From what I've found, very few things can help make someone better, but there is one thing we all need: Community, friends, family, chosen families we make ourselves because they are the people we need around us. One of my closest friends has gone through some of the hardest times I've ever seen with stories I can't even begin to comprehend, and yet, she still stands with us today. She is one of the strongest people I know, but she hasn't gotten better alone. The strong bonds she has with our group, our community, every person who's been there with her have been as much a part of her recovery as any doctor or hospital or medication. And so here's what I want to ask of you: Don't take us away from the communities it took us so long to build. Don't pull the rug out from under our feet during the most stressful years we've been through. What you're planning on doing is exactly that. You want to take me to take us away from our communities. So many in my support networks live a five-minute walk away, but under the proposed plan, I would be torn away from them. For what reason? To overcrowd a school to get money that isn't even guaranteed? Don't do that to us, please. Don't take me away from my closest friends, the ones it took years to form strong relationships with, the people who keep me coming back to the school I love and depend on. Please, don't take me away from the people that keep me not just alive, but living. It's cruel, and it's wrong. Thank you.
Pete Chang.
Split articulation. It sounds administrative, but let's take it for what it really is. It's grabbing a small group of children who have grown up, learned together, and built their sense of belonging together, and sending them on a different path from the peers who helped shape their childhood. Now, you've already seen the data. You've already heard the analysis, but the most important truth isn't just numerical, it's human. These are kids, like real kids, kids like my daughters, Eliana and Aubrey, who have walked through the, through the same halls with the same friends since they were five. Now, my wife and I uprooted ourselves from California to this community so that we could raise our kids to have stability, belonging, and the chance for them to enter middle school and high school so that they can feel connected, not isolated. And for the families, this isn't just emotional separation. It's a physical risk. It would require students to cross Route 3, one of the most dangerous and busiest corridors of this area, whether it's heavy traffic, high speeds, constant congestion. Is that really a road designed for our kids to navigate on their way to and from school? Now, on paper, split articulation, it might seem small now, but to our youth, it's a huge loss, loss of community, loss of identity, and loss of those familiar friends who make that experience walking into class each morning feel okay. In the, in the end, split articulation may solve nothing, but I guarantee it will hurt someone. I know these decisions aren't easy, but as leaders, you have the opportunity to protect a community of kids. Vote no on split articulation. Vote no on separating Eliana and Aubrey and every Nantucket child from their peers, and vote no so that years from now, these families will remember that you chose to carry these kids forward and not apart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Kwong.
I'm Amber Kwong. Let's be real. If this was truly about what's best for children, the Nantucket community would not be here, because it's now clear this plan is being justified by a misunderstanding of state funding, and the state formula is not complicated. Overcrowding does not reduce funding. Underutilization does. Yet, the justification we keep hearing is that Crofton being over 100% capacity threatens funding for future projects. But your solution, the plan you're pushing right now, would put Arundel Middle at 111% capacity by 2033, 111%. Let me say that again: You're making Arundel more overcrowded than the school you claim you're trying to fix, and every student there will pay the price for years. This does not improve learning conditions. This doesn't improve safety. This does not support children, and this is not responsible planning. You didn't solve overcrowding. You just moved it. You didn't solve safety. You just decided someone else's child can be the one crossing Route 3, and you didn't protect community, you fractured it. And here's the part you don't say out loud: Breaking apart a unified K through 12 feeder pattern weakens the community, and a weaker community is easier to dismiss. But we're not weak. We understand adjacency, feeder integrity, the funding formula, and exactly what's being ignored. So let me be very clear: Our kids are not leverage. Our kids are not capacity fillers. Our kids are not sacrifices for a funding narrative that isn't even accurate. You want to call this a solution? No. This is a transaction, and the currency is our children. And if you move forward knowing the harm, knowing the misinformation, knowing the long-term damage, you may ignore emails, you may avoid questions, but you will not ignore us at the next election. And as my children would say, you can clock that.
Brett Sterensen.
That was fire. That was fire. Good evening. For months, you've been hearing from concerned parents like myself, and even myself, about the flawed, long-term projections, the inaccurate SRC, the perils of Route 3, the dangerous socioeconomic impacts, and the horrible effects split-articulation plans would impose on our community. All of this is important. All of this matters, but none of this is the point. The point is this: The superintendent set, and this board agreed, to give WXY the misguided goal of getting all schools under 100% capacity, but as we have all learned unequivocally, despite misinformation at the last workshop, schools' overcapacity are not a threat to state funding. The goal instead should have been to decrease the number of schools in this county that were underutilized, those which actually hurt state funding. So what began as supposed comprehensive redistricting devolved when the superintendent chose to listen to some feedback and not others, and then the board did the same. Comprehensive redistricting would have suggested moving a broader number of small populations to better flatten utilization countywide, but instead, you're now left with tiny swaths of communities being used to scapegoat an inept plan that was doomed from the start. And we get it. If you don't change a thing, you're admitting you had it wrong, but you've been given loads of new critical information over the last week. Do not now rush to make a truly senseless change for the sake of it. Do not take these select Nantucket neighborhoods, the very neighborhoods whose numbers you used to get Crofton High built, and then use them to justify getting Arundel Middle expanded. Don't force them into what will become the single most overutilized school in the entire county. Don't permanently fracture the Crofton community for no reason, all because you had your goals wrong from the start. So let me make this clear: Split-articulating Nantucket does nothing to address an underutilization problem in any school. It is not too late for you to do the right thing. We've done all we can. Thank you all, but you have a vote. This and this alone will be your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to go back and call Miriam Gerdine and Beth Clark. Miriam Gerdine and Beth Clark, are you here this evening? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that does conclude this public hearing. Oh, oh, okay, great.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Gerdine. I'm the mother of three children in the Crofton feeder, and I'm here tonight to add my voice to the many voices who have already spoken up about the public safety at risk here. My unique voice comes with both a lived experience and a federal public health lens of over 20 years, and I do believe we all have the same common goal, the same North Star, to ensure traffic safety for our kids. In reviewing the Anarundel County Vision Zero website, it shows that from Nantucket neighborhoods near Route 3 and Crofton High School, 148 accidents occurred between 2020 and 2024. However, between the Nantucket Elementary School and Anarundel High School, 690 accidents occurs. This means that by sending our children to Anarundel High School, we are increasing the risk of these buses and new drivers getting into accidents by 366%. If moved, our children would lose their healthy environment, the safe walking and biking options they have today, options our community intentionally chose when we decided we were to call home and raise our families. Also, as my husband Clint Gerdine alluded to last Thursday during his testimony, we were directly involved in an accident in this relevant area of Route 3. We were sandwiched between two cars, resulting in our car being totaled. Unfortunately, we were physically okay, and if anyone doubts the severity of these risks, I emailed to the board a video today of an 18-wheeler making an illegal U-turn, a video a neighbor posted online. I implore you to watch the video. It is our daily reality. None of us wants any of our children to be part of those accidents. Public and traffic safety cannot depend on zip code. President cannot be selective, and equity cannot be conditional. The solution our community is offering supports safety, equity, and inclusion all at once. It is the only decision aligned with your own standards. Please remove split articulation from your recommendation. Thank you.
So one final call, Beth Clark. Beth Clark. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, that does conclude- Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, that does conclude this public hearing this evening. On behalf of my colleagues and I, we thank everyone for your time, your caring, and your advocacy. Please drive safely. Have a great night.